Evening everyone, we're calling Marion Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Thursday, April twenty fifth at work. Time is now seven PM. Our first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, so I'd ask for a brief price. Pledge of Allegiance in the file of the United States. To the Republic, Christians, hands, one nation. As always, the meetings are recorded for plenty of video. You ask to be silent for cell phones, one more library, I'm gonna do the same thing for Alice. And for anybody interested, we do have mask and hand sanitizer in front of the room. And as always, if you wish to make a public comment, we ask that you sign in. And when you come up to the podium, that you clearly state your name and address for the record. Okay, so first thing is to approve the minutes of the January twentieth, twenty twenty four workshop meeting. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We're called Peter.
Hi.
Irene, hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Okay. There was no January Board of Supervisors meeting, we were lack of form. Next approval on the agenda is for the minutes, February twenty twenty four workshop meeting. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. We're called Peter.
Hi.
Irene, hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Next is to approve the minutes of the February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four Board of Supervisors meeting. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. We're called Peter.
Hi.
Irene, hi.
Jesse.
Okay, next is the minutes for the March fourteenth, twenty twenty four September Town Hall meeting.
Those are not done yet.
So I didn't see those.
Jeff's opened my pen.
Approved minutes of the March twenty third, twenty twenty four workshop meeting. Did see those, I'll make it to approve.
Second. We're called. Peter.
Hi.
Irene, hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
That's what happens when you're writing in the book.
It's okay, if you need us to slow down, just say so.
And it ends for March twenty eighth, April seventeenth, and the April twenty first, those three are not done yet.
Okay.
They're good. Irene, do you have anything for the treasurer?
Uh, yeah, just a a brief housekeeping thing with our computer, the problem that we had. Uh, the budget got erased from it. So um, yeah, I have to reenter all that data, so for the next. So for the next meeting, hopefully it's have a a budget assessment for us. Um, just a a housekeeping item, QuickBooks is no longer, um, uh. The program that we currently have, we either have to have a local subscription to it. Um, which would uh, annual subscription to it would, which would be, which would be six hundred fifty dollars a year. Or we have to switch QuickBooks online, um, which would be either thirty dollars a month or forty five dollars a month, obviously, the features that we have. Um, we could stick with the current program and there won't be any updates available. And whether or how long it's going to work is, I don't know. Uh, when I slipped through customer service representative, they said, well, you're kind of stuck with it. If you don't update now or you don't subscribe to the annual thing, what's gonna happen? We can't tell you, you know, you're just gonna be kind of stuck with the program. So I guess a- as a housekeeping question, are you guys okay if I reach out to Rick Wall to see what his recommendations are?
Yeah.
The the other part of that is our our contract with our current auditors is gonna be up. Um, this year, so I want to answer if he has any other recommendations, someone else should we should be taking a look at. I got a two more people to reach out to as far as what their pricing is and if they're available to do municipal audits. That's that's obviously the the biggest obstacle I could resolve when I do municipal audits, so. Um, yeah.
On that plane real quick, Colin or Chuck, do you perhaps have any eyes to anybody that would do municipal auditing? That you could recommend affirm or permit to?
Yeah, I can I can get anyone's.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I have have a shortlist.
Yeah.
But it's actually falling on the same page, we want to cancel township of our size. So Rick is is a a local account to help us previously, he does basically fixing stuff, so he's a problem solver. So he's someone who we worked with long in the past and I appreciate his input to see the best recommendations. So honestly, i- if the QuickBooks program's gonna keep on working, I have no problem because.
It'll work.
Right, it's right, we don't get our up any updates. And so so what we have is is really sufficient for what uh, um, our our needs are. I've been able to kind of poke through it and and get quite a bit of stuff, so.
So fu- fundamentally, my understanding of QuickBooks thinking, I'll I'll defer to somebody who's an accountant. But um, there really isn't that much stuff that is actively changing on that sort of thing. It's not like your your TurboTax or whatever, tax code gets updates every year. Generally accepted accounting practices are generally accepted accounting practices is year over year. So we'd probably be okay to use it for the next one to two years. But unfortunately, everybody, whether it's Philly or QuickBooks or whoever, everybody's going to this description model because of making it. It's happy.
We we don't use certain features of program, we don't have people coming in and running out of it, we don't accept contracts to it. Everything is, all this add is entered in manually. So I I guess I wanted to just get a feel of what his recommendations, because I'm piecing iterations of of this before, so.
Double check with him, but I'm pretty confident we'd be okay with like this.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. I don't want six hundred fifty dollars a year for a subscription that we probably won't get any benefit out of. But uh, you know, again, not being familiar with software, are they gonna build something into it that it crashes eventually on? So that makes it so.
We personally oppose against that.
Oh, my.
To a certain.
Okay.
But um, yeah, we can, we can work with that, but I would say for the time being, yeah, the idea is opinion, opposite of the dollars.
I'll shoot, I'll shoot, let me know that, you know, all right, excellent, thank you.
Yes.
Other than that, I'd rather just get the data and be able to have a um, a budget assessment for our next meeting.
Excellent. Okay, um, at this time, we will do the payment of the bills, I'll make a motion to pay the bills for April twenty twenty four.
Second.
We're called Peter.
Hi.
Irene, hi.
Jesse.
Anybody wishing to address more public comments? Again, please come up to the podium, clearly state your name and address for the record and ensure that you signed in on the sheet. Uh, Al.
I refer, do you know fifty five Main Street? I got a problem with the back of the garage.
Which garage?
My garage.
Your garage, okay.
When it was snow, I had to go out and it's just snow falling down, it had a hell of a big guy. Right, and I was up here next week. One day. I want it fixed.
Yeah, I understand, uh, Jesse, you had actually gone out and looked at it, I think.
I did look at it. I did look at it.
Yeah.
It it is. Flayed.
Yeah.
Um. Now, I do know that the yard behind my yard was also flayed. Around the same time.
I don't care about anybody's yard, I want to keep mine where it's supposed to be.
I understand.
So they got come to us, spent about ten minutes and then drove away. So why waste the guessing, look back at the alley?
Who who came to this?
I think it was, I think it was there, I don't know.
We we asked them to go and take pictures, so we understand what those damages.
Yeah, so, you know, if you don't want to do your job right and bring the stuff that belongs to put it back on there. I'll get somebody to do it, but hold on, hold on.
We didn't say you wasn't doing that, but what you saw him with the ten minutes was just him getting pictures for us so that we could see it. I was out of town, like, so I couldn't even drive. Look at it myself.
And I did stop and look at it. Huh?
Oh.
I did stop and look at it. Oh, and I understand your concern.
So I wanted to go.
Well, understood, so Colin, I saw you looking over the, so you have something, what's that?
How do you know it was caused by the truck and not the sun?
You think I'm stupid?
I answered the genuine question. How do you know it was caused by the truck and not the sun?
Because I did.
Yeah, in in very um.
Yeah.
I've seen this one with one shady cabin, but it's it's it is what it is, so. Al, my personal mindset on this is if we. Uh, scraped somebody's lawn or dug or divot or whatever, go back out and get it fixed.
Right, I I don't like, last year it happened the same thing.
Yeah.
Nobody else except my yard. And I went back there, raked it and made it smoother and and started where I want to do it, because we don't. I'll be dead from what I do this every year because the guy is too either too lazy to turn the flower the other way. Or don't go hard flower. What else?
I I doubt it's, I don't know those houses, so there's, having not driven the plow through that section of town, there's there's a good reason. It's not like he intentionally did it and it's not a negligence thing either. So bottom line is, if it happens, whether it's to you or to me or anybody else here. If it happens, let us know and help on making it right. We'll get somebody out or a couple of people out to tamp it down, make sure that it's not that's close to as what it used to be as before. So.
Okay.
Yes.
Just as a side of the workshop meeting, we discussed this issue, you could you could have a seat.
Yeah.
We discussed the issue and we're gonna come up with a complaint form. Um, today I numbered well, we were gonna get the meta. Yeah, so um, we form so that we would ask residents, if this happens to your property, please notify us within a reasonable amount of time. If you'd like to have photos, document it. And so a reasonable amount of time, I would say, would would be within a few days, in up to a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Considering that if there's still snow and ice, etc., to cover the grounds.
Yeah.
Um, so to say the sooner the better and so we would become aware of the problem and and remedy it.
But again, I know road shape is sometimes working against you. I know the, on my way to turn off of shady cabin circle. You almost have to, like, the the way the road is, and you will hit the grass on the one side.
Yeah.
A hundred percent every year this will happen.
Yeah.
And it's usually just a matter, we go out with a shuttle and turn the soil back over, pat it down. It's eighty eighty-five to ninety percent of what it what it was before and then it fills back in in a couple of weeks.
Those those back lanes should really be done with pick up size of plow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is very.
It's it's, yeah, I think it's it's different. So that being said, we're all good, we all try to be good here, so if something happens, we're gonna try to make it right.
Yeah.
So any comments having the guys go out and run in it?
No.
Which? You got it.
If.
Yeah.
At some point.
Yeah.
You.
Oh, I did work.
Okay, one of us.
I did work, I spent uh. And I did put out of uh, problems, stubborn child. But evidently, mostly taken some along the way.
I mean, if you gotta go pick up like a bag of dirt or something like that, base of through value or something. That is the kind of stuff that you can get out of consumer, like if you had to go get a jut of oil or something or micro blades or something for the truck.
Yeah.
Just make sure that you turn the receipt and something all about.
Uh. Uh. I I didn't, I I like a second opinion, uh. Uh, it's uh, it's kind of had had some then gone, uh.
Well, when in doubt, send send us a picture.
Okay.
Yeah, I generally live and die by my cell phone, so.
I'll give you a picture tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
Thank you.
This is what I said. Got snow up here.
Yeah.
Well, you've been up there with a thought way to fix it, it's been some color on it, we're, I don't.
Well, again, I don't I don't know exactly what it needs, so I'm not gonna comment on that, but bottom line is, we'll we'll make it right. If something bad happen, we'll fix it. Chuck?
Just just two quick comments.
Yeah.
I'm assuming the property owner here by grants permission for the township forces to come on his property to make those repairs.
You're okay with us coming on your property to fix this?
Unless you knew it a lot.
I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's clear, yeah, is there a date or time that you want to be present when it's getting done?
You gotta come to the property, okay?
Yeah.
Because there's something to be done.
Correct, we understand that.
You're not coming in there and no spoke, super like, listen, so we can make the report.
It was simply to clarify that you were granting the township permission to come on to your property for the purposes of complete.
It's a red.
On fire. Your, so yes.
Okay.
But beyond the getting the fire off.
Yeah, so second item is, and I'm just sharing this for the benefit of everyone. Representative municipality and one of their friends this year sideswiped a car. That would be driven by one of the planning condition members. It was not intentional, we took the mirror off, but nonetheless, it's difficult to operate plow.
Yeah.
On these narrow roadways, under snow and ice conditions, it's it's got, I think, things happen.
Do you want stones or? I don't hear it, so I'll say put it back in there and slow down, so we're not so back in and I'm gonna.
Yeah, you don't, you guys.
Yeah, yes, it has to sound down the words, but what you do, you gotta, for good reason, do what has to be done to make it right. And if there's other people that let the office know that, hey, this, I noticed this or whatever. Whether it's right now or next year or whatever, we're gonna do the same thing, we're gonna make sure it's a bigger right.
Hello, guys, Rossman, we're called Water Street, Scottsburg. Uh, I'm a new member with the MCT. Um, I've been at maybe six or seven meetings. And I was wondering if there's a way that uh, could find out how much is in our accounts? And how do we, how, I don't even know, because they know that as we understand all of them. So how can we better ourselves with our playground? Uh, if later on, if if building new things, it's gonna be very good.
Okay, so 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 there isn't an account per se. So you have your account, MTC has its own treasury, you have your own account, so that's an issue that you should be identifying with them. If there's something that you want to do that we're requesting funds from the township, you need to make the request first and then the board gets to approve it. As far as playgrounds improvements, I would do minimal, because the newest updated plan is to do a new building as well as a playground. We want to maintain what we have, but I wouldn't ask to invest anything new. I would just rather maintain what we have currently, because we're working with Fields Group and we, Chuck as well, let's come up with a grand design for the park and the building. We want to do everything, make it comprehensive. Um, so I would be very cautious about investing any new funds in into anything in the park.
The one thing I would say is if there's something like, put it down, right, put it in speed or, you know.
Yeah.
Uh, seats like you would get benches, those are very easily relocated. Things like that are perfectly fine. And to Irene's point, you don't necessarily have a checking account necessarily with the town.
I know we do, I wanna, I asking, yeah.
Yeah, there's there's a budget amount was the asking.
But you have to ask us first.
Yeah.
Um, and it has to be approved by the board for any expenditures out of that account. So you can't just go spend the money and ask us to reimburse you. The a project has to be approved by us first if you're not the money from the town.
Case case in point, the uh, the sign, the car show, the the light up sign. That's brought before the board ahead of time and you say, hey, it's gonna be X number of dollars to rent this, is the board okay with reimbursing the community association? We silently said yes, sure, whatever, you go do that, that way it's coming from us rather than coming from your checking account.
Okay, and for this new thing here, I found this paper tonight.
Yep.
So is that going all the way down the hill here?
It would actually potentially, because it's still very much in, really the discussion phase, it'd be up in this current, like the basketball courts are.
Okay.
That's where that would be, so the, can I grab one of those? Can you grab one of those? Um, I think the the current thing that we had in the packet was the building was gonna be placed where the ball field is. And the criticism that we had is, well, flip it so that we don't get rid of the fall field, we have to move the ball field. Because other than the whole TLC, the ball field is relatively speaking, pretty nice. Um, so there's still a lot moving, we had a meeting, um.
Thursday.
Thursday, was that last Thursday?
Somehow, I think it was not.
It didn't, no, no, it was it was last Thursday, it was what, Wednesday, thank you. Uh, we just met with the the designer and we're gonna have additional workshop. For people to come in from the community and provide input. And for us as a board to kind of nitpick things and make sure that next year, when it comes time to request a grant. We have the right stuff in place to be able to actually request the grant.
Okay, so with the grant situation you're sharing, is that, how far is that?
Is that fifty percent and ninety, we have, we have planning yet to do. The grant that came up this year was for two million dollars. Two million dollars would have covered the cost of the building. But we realized we weren't adequately prepared. And when we took a step back, we realized we need to do other planning. So we scaled back that ring, requested two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so that we have enough money to do all the planning that we did. And as we're learning, once we have our plans in place, essentially our ducks lined up in a row. Then it becomes a lot easier to ask for different kinds of grants. The goal for us is to have us completely a hundred percent funded by grants or to do very little magic. And what we're understanding is, there's a lot of support, we've got support from our congressman, we've got support from our local county, we've gotten a ton of support to do this. And with that kind of backing, a lot of places are very much in favor for building a new community center slash township building. So we're looking to do this, I I'm hoping and praying and pressing my fingers, it's a hundred percent funded. Because then really, that's the only way we can afford to do it.
Okay, when? If the building gets, somebody asked me and I put in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Gets torn down, what's gonna happen to this?
This this would be the municipal, for the garage, like the uh, the truck storage and salt shed and stuff would still be on this section of the property. But the the main building, like the meeting space, it'll be in the the new space.
Thank you.
Yeah, more, very much more to come on now, this is against the little teenager or participants, yeah, exactly.
Second.
Good evening.
Yeah.
Welcome, thirty fifty five, we're for over, when you're a resident of Marion Township. Um, I want to apologize right out of the gate here, because I haven't been following this whole trash recycling.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But um, I just want to get some clarity around the the current costs of the residents have to take on. Am I correct in saying that it's gonna cost for trash recycling six hundred fifty dollars per year?
So that's.
Off the top of my head, that is correct, yeah.
Okay. Now, we're of the understanding, or you should be, you you understand that we were paying seventy five dollars a quarter.
Yes.
This is a huge increase.
Yes.
So I I calculated this and, don't hold me to it, but it's probably around a hundred thirty percent increase.
Yes.
And I get it, you know, the cost of this since COVID, man hours, labor, everything's gone off. But I did a little checking, um, B and M disposed on a lease board. Uh, I have some relation in Brooks County. Their trash only, I want to compare apples to apples, is ninety dollars a quarter and ours is a hundred and eleven.
Do you know when they started their agreement? Because the reason ours was so cheap, relatively speaking, was because it was entered into during right before COVID started to be wrong.
I I understand that.
Yeah.
And his, this is a single well, okay? So it should cost more, because it's an an individual, I'm not a township. You know, that that's what, oh, is it ten years already that we've been doing this? And that was kind of proposed in the very beginning, that if we do this as a, in a volume setting.
Yeah.
It's gonna cost less. And I don't see that, those savings now, especially when I see a local uh, vendor providing a single service. For twenty one dollars a quarter less, and I get it, it's just trash.
Yeah.
So. I guess my question is, do the residents have an option to opt out to get someone else?
Yeah.
As the current ordinance, no. So just to give you a little background information on this, so we're we're obviously.
Yeah, this is affecting everybody.
Yeah, so what was happening is, if we rewind about two years ago. When we had the the first three years, one up with Eagle, we had fights all the time about miscollections and stuff going out of trucks and everything else. We put it out to bid at that point. And even two years ago, it was a one hundred and thirty or one hundred and fifty percent increase total. What Eagle had, which is why we stayed with Eagle, even though we had problems. This past year, when the by year, we had no more uh. Options to extend with Eagle, we had to put it out for bid again. And for good, bad or indifferent, JP Mascaro was the only vendor that responded to the public bid. So.
Wait, wait, aside from that.
I just, I said this last meet, last monthly meeting and it's very repeating. Insofar as that, unfortunately, this township is not an attractive place for trash park, because it's so remote. Like in Newsport, Burke Transfer is not that far away. Like here, there's no close landfill. Right, you have Mascaro, you have the Tostos landfill in Morgan Town, I don't know if we're going to London. But we're really not close to a facility and so a lot of the price increase is just a result of the gas price and and the trucks having.
The other part that Mascaro let us, made us aware of and I checked with other people too. The bidding process, if you want it, you're gonna bid on it. So to say that other haulers didn't know about is a false claim.
Yeah.
If they want.
I'm not playing.
Yeah.
Just so you, so other haulers check this bidding process as often as they want to. So the contracts are out there and they and they chose not to bid on it.
And 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 Mr. uh, DeGeneres, Scarrow Council did give us numbers that we we did not suffer the highest percentage increase in Burke County. There are other municipalities e- uh, east of us that were, that had price increases of a hundred and thirty or a hundred and forty.
Yeah.
So it's it's just, you know, everyone in the whole county is paying more.
And unfortunately, um. They're not buying recycling, so that's also driving the cost up, they can't get rid of the recycle.
For what they do.
Well, there's now a process, yeah, so they're they're processing locally now, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of stuff that was processed.
I wasn't, again, I was aware that no one else bid on it.
Yeah.
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 So like I said, it it's unfortunate.
This is, and I, this is fever. And I I'm not blaming anyone here.
Yeah.
But it's just, it feels like we're being strong to accept these terms, these trash. And it's just not right. But that's just my opinion.
Yeah, well, I I would, I would say it's just a counterpoint, I'll let you say something first, Colin, is having the the background knowledge. We just, we did that same exercise two years ago, we did have other companies respond in. And they were all right with each other, there wasn't one that was a lot less or like astronomically, where they were all within that margin of it being about. Six fifty, seven hundred dollars a year for fraction recycling.
I just don't understand with a, there's a volume setting of, it's a township.
Yeah.
And we're still paying outrageous, I mean, it's almost like, it's almost like.
We don't, we don't really have, you know, we have some volume, we have a common scale, but well, not enough compared to, you know, the bigger these sizes. I would say, we we have, you know, four hundred fifty five tons compared to, you know, a few thousand or even more in other places.
And I'm, I'm not blaming anyone here, I'm just, I just wanted a little clarity, I wanted to understand the process. And you you told me there was no one else to bid on it, so if there's no one else bidding, you do.
Exactly, well, a side note, I really appreciate your coming out and putting some concern and your level of interest and uh, and uh. Logical approach to this.
Please call the office to call the office.
Yeah.
And if there's any pickup issues, please have them call the office. Do we have any complaints this week? Yeah, I mean, so far, everything's been exceptional, they have more guys on their truck. Um, or even have one guy, and that was a nifty thing. Um, I think that two, not three guys, and supervisor comes out, um, after the, yeah, he saw them, yeah.
I would hope that service.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We did save a little money because last hall, we did that.
Yeah, that's true.
We we saved a little money because the last trash puller gave us the cans. We're not paying, I was, no, you're not paying.
Yeah, we're not making those complaints. And if you think that in place, type with class and construction quotes.
Yeah.
I'm gonna, I'm I'm.
Yeah.
I mean, that, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Seeing no more public comments, um, let me tell you who's on Zoom here. Uh, we've we've got Ryan A, which I'm assuming is Brian Alguayer. And that's it, so uh, he hasn't said anything in the comments, so I'm assuming he doesn't have any comments. So we'll move into the main items for discussion. Uh, item number one is the Olson Design Group, uh, you had last Wednesday a presentation about the new building. Uh, Kim DeRosa uh, has submitted the COVID ARPA multi-purpose grant for our planning costs of that. Um, and that's submitted successfully on the twentieth of May last week.
Yeah.
Uh, do you guys have anything that you want to add to that?
Nope, Kimberly's wonderful, that's how I can also like thing, I know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, uh, next is the Senator Casey discretionary funding FY twenty twenty five. Uh, we would need to adopt a Russian twenty twenty four uh, DAP eight for this. This is a directly earmarked funding for rural community buildings. Uh, we would be applying for two hundred and fifty thousand for the planning of the new township building. Um, that's not due for a couple of weeks to a month, I believe, on that one, I think that's like the first of June.
Yeah.
Uh, by the way, Kim's on top of it and we're gonna get that one in, uh, again, at the end, stated goal here of having. Close to a hundred percent, if not a hundred percent of the billings paid for by grants. Next is the DCD open application for COVID nineteen ARPA PA purpose community facilities program grant. Uh, Kim DeRosa from Titanara has also successfully submitted this grant request on the twentieth of April. And then the LSA grants account, uh, we made a motion at the last meeting to deposit a thousand dollars into the account so that it's uh, stays open.
Yeah, and that's what we've been free to taking care of. So Kimberly was gonna talk to me about how we canceled the LSA item, so I just need the checks.
Excellent.
Excellent.
Okay, uh, next is the sewer management program, uh, letters, flags, anchors are ready to go. I believe that people are gonna be doing door to door.
Yes.
Walking around, getting things out, products already made.
So, they just, just let you know, have people come door to door, if you want to spread the word. Um, and and we're not soliciting, but this is part of the the sewer management program, okay?
So.
Yeah.
So real quick, one of the things that we're doing to hopefully drive costs around sewer management. And if we have to do the sewer thing eventually, is you're gonna get a a two flag, there's gonna be one for your septic system and one for your well. Two flags, we're gonna be one for your septic system and one for your well. When you get it, all you have to do is stick it to the ground, and it helps the um, I guess it'd be the engineers that are doing the survey. Uh mark on the map where your stuff is so they can better uh coordinate and plan where stuff is in the township, so if you get it. We appreciate your cooperation on that, otherwise, there would be one more statement that we have.
Tomorrow, they're gonna go out tomorrow on Friday, I believe, so. And so our our staff is going up and volunteering your time, they're not getting paid for it, so just let you know. So I believe you're gonna see Sue, Dave walking around, um and Kimberly DeRosa from. No, it's 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 on Main Street, anyone who's affected by the sewer.
Yeah.
By the by the sewer system.
Yeah, any anything that is currently touched by the non-alot stuff in there, the Act five thirty seven. Would be, that would be Main Street, Idris, uh Sheridan, Canal, Shady Cabin Circles, that. Selection of roads there, and it's so that we have a a good approximation of where people's wells are in relation to each other's wells. Septic systems or anything like that.
Okay, before, before, yes, Peter. I would just recommend that we make two motions, one to uh ratify my preparational letter that will be handed out. And a second to authorize townships, uh I think it was an agents to distribute those.
Oh, one, so I'll I'll repeat it out, so we'll make two motions, are you ready, Lisa?
Yes.
First one is to authorize uh Coslaw Stout to prepare a letter.
Well, rat rat.
Ratify, sorry, oh, sorry, okay, so ratify the letter already prepared by Coslaw Stout for distribution with the the flags.
Yep, yep.
Uh which one you guys sent it?
Give it to Jesse.
Roll call, Peter.
Hi.
Irene, hi. Jesse.
Hi.
Okay, then the second motion is to authorize uh representatives of the township to distribute the the letter and materials.
I'll sign. We'll take care of it. Roll call, Peter.
Hi.
Irene, hi, Jesse.
Hi.
Okay, and again, this is purely optional, it's something that we asked, but it is not a. requirement of of any ordinance or statute or anything like that, so it's it's helpful, but at the end of the day. Yeah.
I I will say that to the extent you don't do it, the township will need to incur costs and fees.
Yeah.
To go get an administrative warrant to get the survey points on your property. So even if you, even if you don't know where your septic um or your water is currently located. Just put the flag down in your in your yard to signify your consent that our surveyor can simply enter your enter your property to get the 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 markers that it needs. Ultimately, it will help Hydratera uh plan the 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 most cost efficient way to connect your property with this. That's that's the purpose of this.
The actual surveying, I don't offhand know, but that's something that when we know, we can do another like letter on people's person letting them know that, hey, next week, somebody's gonna be out.
Yeah.
At this point, we don't.
Yeah, and and the ladies are always up there in websites, so, yeah. Yeah, it's it's a great job, and yeah, please call the office for information, please.
Yeah, but that's. A half page, things shoved into people's doors, like, hey, next week, this is happening, would be a good. Good thing, just based on that whole situation. So. Okay, uh next up is the Act five thirty seven special study, the final grant was submitted to DEP. Uh this was the update over the alternative method using low pressure rather than gravity. As well as the stronger wording that we slipped in there about uh requiring grant funding for this to be any semblance of financially viable, so. Now we're waiting for a response.
Yeah, just as a reminder, please, you know, everyone needs to get their septic system inspected, I know. We sent out a letter to to things like orders, you don't necessarily have to do, if you wanna do it soon, you could do it sooner. But please encourage people to do it, again, the data is very important to Hydratera, it's very important with our compliance with Act five thirty seven. If people are resisting doing that, again, the DEP is gonna breathe down our neck, so. Um and and the last thing, we had talked about just having reminders in in our, in our um. In our um.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Speaking of that, if you haven't signed up for the text message alerts, and you'd be interested in that, the the instructions to do that are on the website, and it's super helpful. Trash pickup mist, or if there's a snow emergency or anything like that, or flood warning, or. Yeah, or something like this, for example, that we can notify people, and it's. Very, very uh very helpful, I I signed up for it, the one time we had flooding, I I actually knew about it before. Uh through the text message here, before I knew about it at home, so. Uh next is the proposed short-term rental ordinance, uh. Frank Farland had sent over the virtual rental ordinance, resolution for approval to be advertised in May. Um Irene, I know you reviewed it, and I also reviewed it on a couple of little. Votes, um I don't know if you have to see the.
Yeah, no, it's, is that my other good version?
It is, yeah, it is, yeah. Yeah, it's, so what what I had changed is, so you have the. Well, okay, okay, so you had the the bit about no more than three, five, three to six, I. Three, that's what I was more comfortable with, and I, but where where the property is being rented by any combination tenants, because the original order sounded like it was. Being rented by a single tenant for up to three months, which is not what we were trying to accomplish.
So 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 just so you follow some reference, so it was the second uh heading. You had listed thirty days as a, I apologize, I don't have it in front of, forward it to you. Um so you listed thirty days, in our discussion at our workshop meeting, you were talking about the meaning it's a three months.
Under, what order of the ordinance are you referencing?
Uh. So uh.
Is it definite definition?
No, it's the second whereas, first page. So whereas short-term rentals like Airbnbs, ver- uh Verbos, house sharing, it became popular, loose uh use of land whereby. Couple or group of people typically rents it, calling from a property owner. For no more than thirty consecutive calendar days while transitioning housing arrangements or somewhere. The after that is tacked on now, and where the property is being rented by any combination of tenants for no more than three months out of the calendar year.
Yeah, cuz the concern is, our zoning, our our zoning is for residential. And so we don't wanna have this creation of micro hotels essentially throughout the community, and eventually, like, there would be no restriction on people. On buying some, and buying it in just constantly Airbnbs, and now we've destroyed that that residential community that we're trying to maintain. So I'll look forward this to you and for your review to make sure that it it's good, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Third, uh three-month timeframe, we don't want these Airbnbs constantly, you know, popping up and people just continuously thirty days or off. It's a new rental, new rental, new rental, so we don't wanna have residents, we have these micro hotels essentially used throughout our entire township.
Okay.
Yeah, and if you go on onto the Airbnb website, we have two.
Yeah, there's two of them, so.
Yeah, I checked VRBO and I didn't notice anything.
I I didn't see any last time I looked, but that was really the only thing, um you had a typo or preference along front.
Yeah, so, okay, so so then, here, just go back then, so then. Follow up where, um do we need to integrate the 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 report? I guess, just to clarify, just to state, it's the intention uh to preserve the zone use of the township for residential purposes. Uh where properly assigned, so the and the other line is right, is there's a need for infrastructure system to help, yeah.
Just. One, one point to note again is that our zoning ordinance does not currently regulate.
Of course.
For permanent use, okay? So what that means under the zoning ordinance is that to get to get approval for the use.
Yeah.
You need a special exception.
Okay.
Right, and so the zoning hearing board is entitled to place conditions upon that use to the extent that the special exception is granted.
Okay.
So this this ordinance, okay? Reg regulates. The people who have zoning approval for the use.
Which I don't think either of we do.
Well, they 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 maybe they become pre-existing.
Yeah.
Uses so still subject to this ordinance.
But they've been put on those because of the advertisement.
Yeah.
And then they would have to comply with the regulations.
Which to the extent you have, to the extent you have a new B and B. And a township, they have to look at that special exception.
So.
Like if you, if you had Airbnb pop up in the last couple of months, they should have received zoning hearing board approval before beginning that use.
Wow, so we don't know that.
Um the one, the one, I think it's maybe in here at the lowest. What the timing may be on that, but.
So, well, let's forward that.
Yeah, yeah, well, we sent it to you.
Let us receive this feedback.
Okay.
If if that that line was in there.
Yeah, the the spirit of this, this nature, we won't have somebody that rents out a house, airbnb, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, cuz at that point, it's it's a glorified hotel.
But there's no way to prohibit it unless you've met a zoning board.
Um. Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Like you something, we have to take the joint zoning.
Yeah, yeah.
Like that, that's not the the purp, that's not the purpose of this ordinance, the purpose of the, the purpose of the ordinance is not to limit the use.
It's.
Okay, only only your zoning ordinance can do that.
Okay.
If the purpose is to reg, is to regulate it.
So we have.
Okay, so so right, right now, anyone in this township can apply for a short-term rental any, in any district. Yeah, okay, to the extent we disagree with that, right, to the extent you don't want short-term rentals in your R one district. Then you need to go amend the zoning ordinance, now, again, I I previously advised that. It's probably not necessary for you to do that, because as an unregulated use, the person fully sees it, it's such a exception.
And that would be under the current joint zoning.
Correct, correct.
Few or three years old at least at this point. So both of them would technically be special except.
But this, this, this ordinance, however, can, like I said, cannot restrict or prohibit.
I'm just saying, the the existing, if we're going under just the joint zoning ordinance of it. That's old enough that it, that our inclusion that predates both of the Airbnbs that we have in the township.
Okay.
The only, the only question for the board to answer, I think, at this point, is at what threshold of. Certain amount of rentals in a certain amount of time triggers compliance with this ordinance? And and you can say, well, it's for a rental, needs to comply with this work, or for instance, based on our competition, I thought. You had initially wanted something like, well, if you're running out three times, at least three times in a, in a long time of year, you need to comply. So that that was, that was the only made legislative decision for the township to make on on this.
Yes, okay.
Okay, so we'll, we'll take another.
So, do you have the current version, I will send you the current version, yeah, okay. Take a look at the definition of short-term rental.
Yes.
And determine if you like that threshold or not.
Yes.
Okay, short-term rental is a dwelling unit or growing units on a premises collectively rented by a total of five times.
Right.
Within any one uh year period. First, I think that's fine.
Yeah.
So, okay, so well, there were one or two little, I think there was something about in there, uh.
Something to take out.
Yeah.
There's only one word, I said gender.
Yeah.
Any gender.
Yeah.
Is how people identify, even not.
Yeah.
Sorry, but that's about it.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
In material, correct, so yeah, we'll we'll send you just a quick note on it, but honestly, I'm comfortable, if if you're comfortable with it. This motion being phrased this way, that's um subject to some final uh adjustments. The approval to advertise the uh short-term rental ordinance. Cuz like, other other than that question around the the additional language on that first and second whereas. Everything else was was spot on.
But we we, no, we have to take out.
That's what I'm saying, that is is original one, it's fine.
Yeah, you're right, so we have to take issue with joint zoning to limit the three models, so it would be at the next.
Yeah.
So make make a motion to authorize its advertising with minor revisions that he just outlined.
Correct, I'll make a motion to advertise the short-term rental ordinance with the minor alterations as discussed.
I'll second. Roll call, Peter.
Hi.
Irene, hi, Jesse, hi.
And the next one is the proposed long-term rental inspection ordinance and fee schedule. Uh Kraft provided some sample ordinances, I did not finish doing a review on this one. Um Irene or Jesse, do you have anything that you would put on this, but I think we're.
I have everything, and I kind of went a far right now, so, if if we, let's take a little bit of a better look at it, yeah.
And Peter, just as an aside, at the last meeting, I advised the board. That the long-term rental ordinance should basically mimic the short-term rental ordinance for ease of enforcement, and that I suggested. We pass the short-term rental ordinance first before both the second finishing.
Yes.
That long-term ordinance for.
Correct. Okay, uh next is the Western, or excuse me, the uh forty fifty Conrad Wiser Parkway, excuse me, jump ahead there. Um, do we have any news on the forty fifty Conrad Wiser Parkway situation?
Right, so I think at this point, um. The township is going to try and get the consent of the secretary or manager to enter that property. For the purpose of a code inspection.
Okay.
Um, I've spoken with Paul Hawk, the township solicitor, she has spoken with the police department. They have agreed to be part of that inspection, obviously, on the consent of the manager slash secretary there. To that end, I have prepared um. A letter seeking the consent of that secretary, um which advises her of. Her and the property owners' constitutional rights with respect to being able to say, no, not having these. So at this point, what we need to do is we need to approve this consent letter. Uh drafted and then authorized and attempt to do a code inspection there at the consent of the secretary.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the uh consent letter that was drafted.
And 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 authorize uh the township's seeking of the consent to to conduct the code inspection.
Okay, then authorize the seeking of consent, the code inspection.
Roll call.
Hi.
Peter. Uh Jesse.
Hi, Irene, hi.
Yeah, we need to.
No, but but I I I would ask that the person, the supervisor. Going along with Kraft and the police department, contact the chief of the police department to schedule that time and date.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure, sure.
Because they're 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 expecting one of you to contact that.
Okay, okay, so I need support, we would crack.
And the chief.
Okay, okay, not a problem, who's gonna be in charge of that, so we know who's spearheading that, like which guy from Kraft is doing that?
Well, well. Crack, all the crack that are put off, I I need any individual of that firm can be involved, but I I think that Glenn. Burle is the supervisor of that department, so add a minimum payment and maybe I've got code as well.
Awesome, Jeff. Excellent.
Uh next up is the Western Borough Joint Zoning ordinance, the section for amendment about. That's all investigated for hours, uh we finally have the meeting date with the joint zoning group. It is sixteenth of May at seven P M in the Hyalberg Township Building, uh Jesse and I will be there and uh. Need to make a motion effectively to approve the new date.
Correct, so at 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 that meeting, you'll be seeking the recommendation of the joint planning commission. For. Approval to enact the ordinance, okay, so after, assuming that happens. There there are, thereafter, we'll need to submit that ordinance to the county and the municipal plan, planning commissions. Okay, they all will then have thirty days to review, okay, when that. During that period of time, we can advertise, and then. Um, a quorum of every municipality involved in the joint zoning ordinance. Must confer on one meeting that acts in enacting that ordinance, okay? So that's the process moving forward, go ahead.
Even if it's one, like, let's say, none of the other municipalities are interested in that being, they also have approval.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, uh next is the property tickets issued on sixteenth of October of this building owned by AT and T. Uh was approved at the March Board Supervisor meeting to have Frank Farland send one final letter to AT and T New Headquarters in New Jersey. And ask the. And ask the property owner for permission to be on the property to uh further review that that site. Uh, this notice violation was sent in April on the eleventh from Kraft, um, did we get anywhere with A T and T or no?
I haven't heard anything from Kraft, so I assume that that demolition notice has gone unanswered.
That's surprising.
The 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 next step, assuming they don't respond within the third day period, is to go get the consent of the the abiding property owners, um pull up full administrative warrant against A T and T, uh and then at that point, we'll wanna um con- contract that work if it's under the printing threshold, obviously, the G quote is over then you get it. But that those are the things that's on it.
Uh, I would say it was fine, let's let's get the consent of the property owner, uh Chuck, is that something that some somebody?
Yeah, I I will, I will, I will let her get that and.
Okay.
I don't know. I think I'd see if you're asked to be allowed to.
Property owner again, yeah, certainly, yeah, because I think if I recall correctly, you've been talking to the property owner last previous, yes, okay.
Okay, great.
Okay, uh, next, we discussed very briefly during the comment, the property damage from plow, there were a couple of areas that were outlined uh that did receive damage during the snow snow removal. Um, obviously residents like one of these areas fixed. Um, we are working on getting a a formalized uh submission form in that if there is damage incurred for plowing in the future, that we can take them in the same sort of format each and every time, and then obviously go and do what has to be done to address that damages. Um, so we'll we'll get that in place, um, imagine we just have a motion to approve the use of that form once it's done. Um, but I I didn't get a huge chance to look at it, I personally backed it over the past couple of days, so. Anything either of you would like to add into that?
No, no, that's the best thing, you know, we have a a form, residents can use it all. We like could pick up the form eventually on our website and submit it to the office and so we have it documented.
Yeah, I mean, eventually, just as a segue on that, I think it'd be really nice to maybe have like a loophole to work for on the website.
No, you're.
Ev- everywhere, Pablo's Pablo's our township. Um, speaking of that, don't let me forget, I do wanna make uh uh um a motion towards the end there, if we have amended the agenda, we have amended the agenda, but I wanna get cold patch order.
Fifteen of the agenda for that.
It's it's gonna be a cost and it's not on the agenda already unless we have a break thing.
But if not emergency type of a thing, so.
Yeah.
You can't.
Yeah.
Ask you a person, you need things to remember. There.
So.
How much money?
It's not a huge, off the top of my head, I don't know, maybe a couple thousand.
Okay, you can always buy and ratify the purchase at the next meeting.
Okay, so we'll 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 talk about that later, but there's a lot of spots on the roads that were there last year and there's a ton that have opened up that we need cold patch, so, well, I'll do that at the end, but just don't let me forget.
Okay. Okay.
Are you keeping track which roads? Hold back.
We're 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 working at the top end of the of Marion Township right now. And and school road, we start, we we say, me and David said uh, let's let's go fill this hole up on such and such a road until we get to school road. Uh, we don't get done with school school roads. And uh and I have a load of whole pack setting in the garage right now and one of the trucks. I guess Dave and Kevin are gonna go out on Saturday morning.
Yeah.
And and do that, and they'll probably get done with school road.
Yeah, good, but I mean, there's, I don't think there's a single road, with the exception of maybe Hickory and that that section of uh school road that was done a number of years back, that's newer, ever where Scott Pottles this year, so.
Yeah, I know, I know, uh and uh and uh, uh, I think we're done on on the on the on the other side of four nineteen, like with Ford Road and and now uh uh, what is it, canal, uh Ford Road and Charming Ford Road. I think we're done on that side of four nineteen. Uh, like it's like uh the other day, Dave said, well, let's go around there and and hit school road. When we, when we got uh on the school road, that wasn't enough on the truck anymore.
Yeah.
Uh, well, we're just taking the little truck, uh, that's all the time we have during one day, uh, this uh this is the fourth prop. Little truck we got.
Yeah.
And uh and I guess we get uh two and a half ton on on town.
Okay, thanks, thanks.
I I I went down this afternoon and got that load and setting on the garage right now.
Okay, very good, thank you for getting on top of that, but I have a feeling, based on what we had already like approved, or just we're gonna, we're gonna need more.
Yeah, we will, yeah.
Yeah.
And uh and uh so how more we can do. I mean, uh, that tire, that tires uh to retire, retire people, ah, just do it.
Yeah, it's it's they're not all gonna get passed to the day, it's gotta keep keep out of it.
Yeah, uh, and uh people are asking, asking us a lot, uh Charred Road, you know, we're gonna do that and uh he said we wanna see what he say at the meeting tonight.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up on the agenda is the twenty twenty four road projects, engineer has, yes, please.
When they fix the roads.
Hmm.
Like they give something like out in there and then go back and forth with the truck with the wheels, but you still got a a bump. So why not invest on a for on a rover, and when you put it down there, you make it smooth. In the winter time.
Yeah.
In the winter time, when the plow is difficult to stop. Yeah, but if it's smooth, you don't pick up nothing.
So we we have a tamper, are you guys using the tamper?
No, we are.
What you're telling me.
Yeah.
Uh.
Okay.
We we drop it over.
Yeah, we we have, we have the kangaroo tamper, can you you, Dave, start using the kangaroo tamper, because Al's point is valid, you don't wanna have a crown on that, otherwise it's funky when you drive on it and it's how you guys set it with plow. Uh, we have the, we have the tool, let's use the tool for the job.
That that's why it doesn't worry when you when you plow the soil, you don't move the plow now because you're able to, when it was out there, you knocked the kid out. Uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's anyway, no way.
So do we, do we need like a little prager or something for you guys with the kangaroo tamper, or like what's the, what's the?
Oh.
Yeah, we have to take this on very. Take the uh you know, I told us on the hospital. I'm wrong, to to then we needed a machine.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, like, if you need a little like tow behind trailer to go behind the truck or something for equipment, let us know, that's, and that's the stopping point.
But.
It's it's like. Steal plate it just a moment, yeah.
We can hang.
Like a.
Or we can go or not.
If so, so so we need to formulate this a little bit better, we need to start looking at us and see what else we need.
Yeah, if there's, if there's something that's preventing you guys from using a piece of equipment, whether it's the tamper or anything else, tell us, let us know, because we wanna do things the right way, so don't have lumps in the road or anything else, so if there is something, we'll we'll figure it out and we'll work with you on that, but Al, to your point, it should be tapped out because of what you get lumps, so.
I I pay more money, I fix little bits, nothing gets fixed. They have a room for the equipment, and then we gotta pay for the fixing equipment.
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
It don't have any sense, I mean, I don't.
Everything shouldn't, everything needs to be tampered. Uh, everything needs to be tampered, at least with a hand, yeah, everything needs to be tampered, yeah, at least use a hand.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, driving, driving the truck over is a force. And and for one, it's worth, which I don't expect you and Dave to go out and hand tamper at least, because that that will kill one of you.
Which is why we have the gas, the gas power. Now, Ryan or. Uh, maybe this is for spreading this. Some sort of, make it more heading.
Yeah, to make it more or not, I, I had the tamper on the typo, you know, we have.
By the point like.
But but that 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 mushroomed the dock. It was too.
First to to us, can we turn that down?
No, yeah, no.
When we get a tamper unit, it's on a skid loader or something.
Well, we have, we have the back of the back of John here, like running water.
So you're, I thought we.
We have a handle too, but I I forgot that we have a fire, like fire rating place.
So we have one that's up to the back.
Yeah.
But like I said, I used that one time and just mushroomed the dock, well.
It's gonna, it's gonna take some practice, it's gonna take some practice, you gotta, you know, use your.
I don't think so.
I'll tell you what, for everybody following along in your life, it's we're we're gonna work on on this, because we have the equipment, we just need to make sure that it's being used and being used correctly, so. Whether it's school road or sharp or charming forge or whatever, when we put a pothole patch in, the goal is to have it be. Uh, that's. Ryan would be able to offer some on the tamper. Yeah, road crew employee. Yeah, Ryan, you can you can hear us, you're uh you're being volunteered for some expertise, but uh yeah, that's actually a fair point, that Ryan has probably used that a lot and could give Butch some good tips and tricks on on how to use it. So, either way, we'll we'll be doing more on that, because there's going to be no shortage of pothole hatching this year. Okay, um, going back to the twenty twenty four road projects, engineer has to get some estimates for Sheridan Road South, we want it at Bull Market County Line. Did I, did I say? I my computer skipped away and I must have bumped my my cursor. Um, uh, road maintenance, clean, okay, so the I thought is the next item on the agenda is road maintenance about cleaning, developing a plan to clean out culverts. Uh, snapping in with the the five to six year maintenance plan, getting roads fixed and maintained, and getting to a point where we are on a preventative cycle rather than a reparation through the format.
During the workshop meeting, he asked Butch if he could go out at some point, um, and so actually the documents are all all of our culverts, did we have ordered a map?
Yes.
Let's see. So if we could pin the map so where everything is, and we had asked Butch if we can't get into the culvert physically, that John can come out and assist him without get the drone in there, so we can get a really good view of of what the conditions are. Because we have to start looking at everything and start getting.
That's for catalogs.
Catalog, knowing what we have and and getting things before there's there's a big problem as fast as we can. Because unfortunately, infrastructure is sort of being new buzzword and there might be more funding.
Yeah, yeah, so the other thing is we have those three culverts left a couple of years back that snuck up on, it's almost sense that they were just kinda there and then suddenly they weren't.
Yeah. Yes, yeah.
So, yeah.
So it it it's getting around and maintenance, maintenance, maintenance and documenting and knowing what we have and what the condition is in, so we could attend to the worst first, so.
Yeah, one of the things that you're ultimately easy to do, like to see us do, is what we get like a report of whatever from Butch that's like this culvert, this road, this road, is let's grab GPS coordinates and let's get a table going, even if it's an Excel, you know, like, okay, here's what it is, here's the problem, here's the GPS coordinates. Because then, one, that'll be useful for us for now, a a unique record of these things, other than like it's on these two roads somewhere.
Yeah.
Um, and we also might be able to back that into something in the future where it's more deeper than one place.
Yeah, I just probably can be able to school with GPS.
Oh, when you take a picture, you're on, you're logging it, it's a GPS.
Yeah, yeah. Would you be able to help with create the database?
That's a problem.
So so, you know, Butch doesn't like to use computers, so I think that's very important, that we create that database, because I can tell you there's so much data that has been lost because it wasn't put into a set kind of format.
Yeah.
I can tell you from all the financial information, everything's on paper, I can go back and pull everything from paper, but it's just so time consuming, having everything on the computer to be able to create any kind of database, data information is so useful, so.
The quick access to stuff that really is activating, so.
Well, let me, and one thing that, one tool that you could utilize and the secretary had asked me about was Luis's G I S database.
Okay.
Um, now that requires requiring some software and of course puts that into it, but then once it's set up, you can literally have it's a that you can see all your signs, you can see all your culverts, any other. And it creates a robust record, you can pull it up, it'll have a portrait, it'll have a picture, the sign will have you.
Can you send us the details on that, because I'll I'll get that solved like right away, because one of the things that I.
It's more software, I mean, it's something, so I have someone in our office that does set these systems up. So maybe I'll get some more info from him with the program B.
Okay.
And then just provide the board with a memo or something to that effect, what it what it would entail.
Okay.
That's that's something.
Yeah, because I I want us to start cataloging these things.
Everything.
So it can be.
Yeah, if we can, if we can do that digitally, that would be fantastic.
I mean, I don't know about you guys, but if I look at spreadsheet, I can see a bunch of numbers and grid data, um. For me, it would be easier to see a map of the town from how each culvert mark on the map is. On a digital line, that's.
Yeah.
It's kind of rough, like his Reddit plans to, or if it's red, we gotta make it green, right, like a little button there, hey, here's a culvert, it's screwed up, it's in red, let's make it green, you know, we suspect that it was clean or whatever.
I I like the visual aspect of it too, um, pictured really worth a thousand words.
And then in the back.
Guts of that.
It's gonna be most funny.
Well, we're not even just looking at the back and guts of that, pull those data points, refer it together.
Mm-hmm.
So if we started pointing some, having advanced the G I S, the truck was talking about, we always have.
Yeah.
Put the hard data from the GPS exact without the prior.
Right, so so we need to do this, because like, uh unfortunately, there's so much information that we lost that.
Yeah, well, it's in city or somewhere, you know.
Square, and so we need to just keep on moving forward and thinking, like, yeah, we we rely on you guys for input a lot, thank you, because this this completed that idea that we had during our our workshop, I mean, thank you, Chuck, yes.
Perfect.
Oh, I'm so excited, yes, yeah. Yeah, you've given Chuck, or can Chuck giving uh Butch more work to do, you know. That's okay, you know, and 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 if you haven't taken where you think you're gonna go and look at culverts, if John's around, I think John would be happy to go with you just to go and understand and and get an idea of of stuff, yeah, so I'll come out, okay.
I was painting culverts today, you know, PA one called uh overnight. And I was painting roads today, but I guess I didn't mark enough on on your way.
Yeah, what was, do we know, like, what PA one calls for, because it's all about surveying.
They didn't want for for individuals.
But it was, it was a design consultant, obviously, doing one, a design phase one project, so all the utility companies or their their facilities. And I advise through the secretary to let Butch know that the township should also be marking any, you know, you don't have a working sewer system of any swarm sewer or anything that you're aware of as far as buried utilities should be as at least approximating some mark, yeah. Um, but I can't remember the individual's name, but and I don't know why it was, it was similar to thickets, what they call tins, isn't it?
Yeah.
Um, but it was different location, basically around the property, I'm assuming. Um, and and again, this is in the design base, we, I don't have any idea what's coming, not a lot of information other than uh who's in the ticket space and basically location of what kind of.
I I was just curious, like, oh, like two or three different trucks. I had guys coming up, surveying stuffs.
They're there today, it's at their, you're here for the tour.
Okay, might have been, oh, there, well, maybe, yeah, maybe. Yeah.
Well, they hope.
Yeah, the 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 design firm was not.
High tech area.
No.
It was, he didn't see, yeah.
Oh, they're little survey.
Yeah, thanks.
Uh, and then that's what it was.
Yeah, no, okay, uh, next up is the Wintersville Road Culvert, this is thirty eight twenty Wintersville Road, uh, we authorized this in February to be.
Um, it was not to put out the bid, it was to start the design process for that, I think.
So, um, and we have started that, but I'll have more information next month, because we had a bunch of other things going on uh to advance projects here for the township, that was in the works, very good. Uh, Penn Dot Maintenance, uh, letters were received from Penn Dot Road Maintenance, uh for the mowing. And that's just the mowing. There's that mowing.
Hands off letters for receipt at Penn Dot to uh for road. Penns out letters for receipt at Penn Dock to uh for road work being performed in August and September twenty twenty four, item number fifteen.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, my only question is, is it one or two agreements that we have with that one for mowing, one for snow, or is it a single?
No, it's two different.
Two different ones, that's what I thought, so is this the snow?
What do you think?
Fifteen, the maintenance.
Mowing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause I I know that that agreement has to be renewed, it's not. Already, like Paul's down there nodding. Yeah.
If you have or if you have not already, yes.
Yeah.
Wow, somebody signed it. Very.
Okay, well, then if that's if that's good, that's good, and I know it's a renewal.
I think I'm being signed.
Alright, good. I believe. I believe we authorized the sign, but I don't recall it ever actually being signed, I didn't sign by reason. Uh, okay, so. We received letters from Penn Dock Road Maintenance uh for August seventh, September. Uh, this work work will be on uh figure three thousand four uh Carving Ford Road between Alphahawk and Ford Road and Heidelberg Road. As well as sacred forty ten Christmas Village Road between Rursford Road and Heidelberg Road. Uh, as well as sacred four nineteen Rursford Road between Tom Road, Watcher Parkway and the Port Quarter.
Is it safe that we didn't be in the agenda now that everything's signed and approved?
I don't think so, the only thing that we would wanna do is if you get an update. From Penn Dock about like specific dates within August or September.
Okay.
Do me a favor, just put it in under my comment section rather than think of it as an agenda item, I'll make this.
Okay.
It's made aware. Okay, next is. The twenty twenty four road projects, I mistake, I jumped ahead on earlier. Uh, engineer had a test, uh, test had gotten there in Road South, we're going to put Bullard to Lebanon County. Uh, roughly priced out at three hundred and twenty six thousand dollars. Here in the road north, we're going to put Bullard to School Road, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Stoutsford Road, not uh and nine hundred thousand dollars and Wintersville Road, five hundred and thirty two thousand dollars. So roughly, uh, two point one million dollars. Um, did based on the high price tags associated with all these road projects, we did approve Sheridan Road South. William Penn Boulevard to Lebanon County line. Um, Chuck, is there any update on that?
Yes, so I I think this agenda item could really kind of strike out and remove. Of most of the estimated numbers there, um, you know, basically this this project now is Sheridan Road. And you know, we're we're. We're in the process of the design for that, we have completed the field survey and feel it's necessary. To design five, five or six. Replacement for new culverts to address the drainage issues along there. Uh, and then. We're also working specifications to have bid documents ready to go. So I'm. Requesting the board provides an authorization for me to advertise. The Sheridan Road Drainage and Pavement Improvements Project. Um, and I'm thinking that's gonna happen here sometime in May. So that's why I don't wanna wait till the May meeting to be able to au- advertise that project. And again, it's for the estimated number up there at the top, although. Well, we talk about the these estimates in a little while, but um nonetheless, you know, if we're gonna get this project done, we have to uh. Really get get the bid documents finalized and designed finalized and advertised for bid.
I'll make a motion to authorize the advertisement of the drainage of roadway improvements for uh Sheridan Road South, William Penn Boulevard to Lebanon County.
Okay.
Second. Be good for them.
Yeah, I would.
Uh, and I want to use that in my front, there's door call meter.
Hi.
Jesse. I mean, sorry, sorry, this is.
So.
It's exciting, so the the chairman, the the next item is seventeen hundred guide rails, yes, you know, the update there is, um. We reached out to, I think it was at least four local guide rail contractors within the region. None of them were tow star vendors, so given the price. Estimated cost for this guide rail, um, I'm gonna also add more authorization to advertise for bids. Uh, for this project, that we are in the works of preparing. Uh, those documents and my goal would be it's some complicated project to bid that here in early May. And come back to you at the May meeting, submit numbers for that.
Okay, I'll make a motion to authorize the advertisement for bidding. For the Hickory Road and Ballinger Road guide rails. Actually, excuse me, I start that, the William Penn, Gregory Road, so the wrong.
Well, just just William Penn Road at this point.
No, no, uh, no, no Hickory.
Then it is.
Okay, William Penn, but.
Well, I mean, there's we like twenty feet if that one on Hickory. Then we should include that, so we will add in Hickory Road then.
Yeah, it's it's a super small amount.
Right.
Why we have.
Getting economies of scale, yeah, now's the time to do it. Of course, Ballinger Road.
Ballinger, yeah.
Hold at this time.
Exactly, yeah, I I soon as I said that, I noticed it worked. So the motion is to authorize the advertisement for bidding. Of guide rails to be installed on William Penn Boulevard and Hickory Road.
Second. Road call meter.
Hi.
Larry, hi, Sheridan.
Hi.
Okay.
Just thinking about account balances, we should have a helping budget.
Yeah.
For next year.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah.
Yeah, based based on what we had talked about at the beginning of the year and what we could talk about with budget. We shouldn't be the either liquid fuels or the the budget amounts that we have set aside or working to get them done. Through through any of these things, um. We have enough that if something comes up as an emergency, we can cover that without it being a break. In the moment, so.
Well, both the guide rail project and the uh Sheridan Road subject. Then we have. Authorization from Penn Dollar One for liquid fuels.
Hmm.
Um. But we will pursue liquid fuel, liquid fuel funding for any project and full, yeah.
Who, who was that? Our real company that uh put the guardrails up when you put the culvert.
Yes, that was one of the ones we reached out to.
Oh, okay.
Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is road issues, uh, we have been receiving some complaints about the school road, two people wrote in asking when it would be taken care of. This is a heavily traveled road and people are wondering if it's gonna be paved anytime soon. Um, the broker is working on filling potholes, but we haven't asked, engineer has to take a look at it.
Yeah.
Um, and I apologize, Chuck, I didn't get a chance to review the whole the whole package.
Yeah.
Sent by.
Yeah, I sent that email just this morning, um.
Yeah, I I did, I did notice on one of the pages here that there's a uh a cost estimate for doing a binding force or wearing forceful school road. And the total of that for for school road, the remaining portions of school road is almost a million dollars, it's nine hundred eighty six thousand dollars, yes. That's that's not even a full depth reclamation, that's.
No, because it would have been caught more laws prohibited to do it, it's full depth reclamation. Place recycling. Um, for no reason that I outlined in the email. So our approach is really to just try and fill in all what we have there. With enough pavement to provide some structural. Capacity into that road layout.
Yeah, so that's that's something that we're gonna need to look at, but the the bottom line is. We're we're still sort of playing catch up on certain other roads and we just simply don't have a million dollars in the the budget to do school road. It's the brass tacks of it, so.
You know, but again, looking at grants and stuff like that, so if we have enough detail, we have a project that's actually planned, just step a portion running. And we could we could reach out and and.
And and honestly, no, move the grant, you're relying on the limits of the road. And what's the cost to fix it?
Right.
We can always supplement that with photos of the roadways, but that's pretty much your grant application, um.
Yeah, we just need to establish something and make. Make sure you're on board with the cost of parity application, get them submitted, okay? And again, that was for uh sw- wood drive and and that's that's unreconstructed portion of school road, yeah, which which is four miles in length, um.
Uh, wood drive is less than half a mile, um, a hundred and eight thousand, so. Yeah, I mean, you're not dealing with small lines, uh, miles of way to to deal with here, yeah.
Okay, so it's keeping an eye out for grants and you've got all the information, it's it'd be easy enough to.
It's easy, still takes time. Absolute grant requirements, but.
Yeah.
Letters of support might be part of resolutions and so forth, so it 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 is can be quite an endeavor depending on the grant program, but unless.
Recommend that we go ahead and we start preliminary things like that as far as getting letters of support of documentation.
Usually the letters of support have to include, you know, like we'll send a template to people that can they can use, but you identify the funding. And it's specific limits or whatever, okay, so it it is tailored to each grant application.
Yeah.
And and we're talking, you know, local politicians, county.
Yeah.
Technicians, takeaways as much as we can, if there are only a few last pile, I, yeah, so it's, you know. And I've been sent trying to send those, you know, you.
Yes.
Yeah, um, but if there's something you see that you think is is what we wanna pursue.
Yeah, I looked at that last one, I don't, I don't know.
And and Butch, anything that. Makes that tamper harder, transport, ergonomics, anything like that, let me know about it, please. Because we're giving ourselves a little more self inflicted bleeding we need.
Yeah.
Well, we're. We need to get that tamper used.
Uh, it's uh we told the tenant, you're gonna have to take it back to rock and load it on there.
If you gotta, okay, the tobacco has a tamper attached, so whether it's the the the. The portable unit or the one on there, or if we have the tool, two.
Yeah, anything that makes it easy on you, let me know. Uh, please.
Yeah, we have the tracker, if you need the tracker.
Change outs or tracker. Or if there's something else you need, if we make it easier, let us know. I realize that you guys aren't in your twenties, but.
Next item on the agenda is the extension of the storm water pipe along Marion Drive to Main Street, uh, UGI has successfully relocated that pipe in the middle of the road. And I believe one of the layer one. Further, uh, but we do actually have some bid numbers back for that.
Yes, and uh, so last year when we were looking at this project. And and waiting for uh how to deal with the UGI conflict with their gas main, as you mentioned, they have now relocated. So we put out uh soliciting some quotes. Um, I'm gonna have to say I am no longer a valid estimator of construction. Um, because you know, last year. Uh, we were thinking it was gonna be close to the bidding threshold of, and the state doesn't give you much room to work, um. It's twenty two thousand three hundred dollars, anything over that, you must publicly bid. So we were thinking we were under that threshold, however, I stand. Ordinarily corrected and I'm ashamed because we had a low bid of fifty five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. From Allgar Enterprises here in Woltersdorf. Uh, all the way up to ninety thousand dollars, now this is one block of roadway. Three hundred and fifty linear feet of pipe and four inlets, and I just cannot believe the amount of inflation. That is hitting the construction industry. Um, the fact that storm pipe install is getting over a hundred dollars a linear foot. It totally blows my mind. Um, inlet boxes themselves are again astronomical, anywhere from twenty five hundred. Uh, all the way up to forty fifty three hundred, so so the contractors are bidding a wide range here. And. We asked for these folks yesterday to. When I saw them, I placed a call, I'm I'm trying to get a handle on what are the material costs? Cause these costs reflect not only the materials, but the labor. Uh, to install, of course, operating equipment and what happened, but um. Construction inflation is out of hand. It's on the trash costs were expensive, yeah, this this really makes it difficult to maintain.
I mean, you can get a structure.
This project wouldn't be qualified for the fuels, so as a result of not having a suitable bid below the threshold. I guess I'm gonna ask for the board's permission to now publicly advertise the project for bid.
Okay, I'll make a motion to publicly advertise or bid. The Marion Township, uh, Marion Drive, the main streets, all word by product.
Second. Road call meter.
Hi.
I mean, I'm Jesse, but.
Thank you, just like you, Bush, did you want?
Uh, Chuck.
Yes.
Uh. Hmm, uh, is uh, is the base company gonna dig their own pipe or not?
No, the they had tested the old pipe, no, it's be present in the material. So the pipe can remain in place, if we encounter it during installation, we can remove it as need be, or we can leave it in place.
Oh, just uh because we we had heard felt early on.
Yeah.
And when if they have to dig their pipe off, that would be the time.
Well, they're not going to dig the pipe out, they don't have to dig the pipe out, so. Uh, yeah, we're we're free and clear on that, it's been disconnected, it depends, as we hit it or don't hit it, it's not an issue.
Well, I hear from anybody.
I'm sorry, sorry about that, it's a good good question, yeah, we're we're free and clear on the old gas line.
Okay.
Okay, okay. Uh, next up is tree trimming, uh, we're still working on trying to find some quotes, uh, everybody that we have reached out to so far has said that we're too far away. Uh, the secretaries are still working on that and I'm gonna make some calls with a couple of arborists, but but I have knowledge of to see if that company that's within their. Uh, sale house of of doing this, if you trim trees, that's a certain, we do, we do some tree trimming, so. Uh, more on that hopefully next month, uh, twenty one and twenty two, the two items around Ballinger Roads and the the fill over quote matter itself and the agreement based on. Off litigation, we'll be skipping those. Um.
Yeah, we we update on that, and so we. Completed the restoration plan and submitted that to County Conservation District for review and approval.
Good.
On the receipt of such, we provide that plan to the property.
Very good, thank you. Okay, uh, next item is the equipment and equipment repair, a big truck apparently is having some electrical issues, one salt printer removed. Uh, needs to go over to Al Creek to get looked at. To FYI, I ordered anything else. Uh, next on the agenda is the uh equipment sales, so we had put up one, we did the bid, the nineteen seventy two John Deere three oh one tractor loader. With the Alamo attachment, the bidding on that started at twenty five hundred dollars and we sold it for five thousand six hundred. Uh, that was the old old piece of equipment that was sitting there, just kind of rust. The other item was the nineteen ninety four John Deere two ten seat front end loader, bidding started at forty five hundred for this, and it sold for six thousand six hundred and twenty five dollars. Uh, we made a motion at the April workshop meeting to approve the final bids, the money was received for boat bids with a possible pickup date of yesterday, um. They. They pick those up?
They they got the. The last practice that you said.
Okay.
Picked up, last night.
Okay, so you got the Tennessee yesterday?
Yeah, and they got the other, the other tractor more theory.
Okay.
Double two minute, and that'll be picked up here in May, May summer.
Okay.
I don't, I don't have a date.
Good, I'm pleasantly surprised that we got.
Yeah.
Couldn't use it, maybe don't.
And uh, and uh, I could. I can go to the next last time, I normally did in the front. I I'm sort of ashamed of it, but he borrowed ashes, so, so.
There there were no pretenses made with that on the estimate, that's what it was. Okay, uh, next is, uh, Jesse, I'll let me take the the help on this, sort of this discussion around purchasing a small tractor for doing ball field maintenance.
Yeah, we were looking at getting a subcompact tractor for maintenance in the park and ball fields, so we can properly drag it. Right now, uh, Bush is trying to use a full size farm tractor to drag that ball field, it's terrible, it's painful to watch, um. So we need something to get in the corners, make it ball field a lot prettier and. Less uh under maintenance, um, so I was getting some quotes and some subcompacts to do the park for park maintenance, keep ball field better. Uh, right now we stand at four estimates, um, so. That's where we're at with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
It it's not just that we just.
Salads.
But these equipment we have, it's.
You're using for a loss.
Yeah.
It's it's gonna be versatile, but the 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 main use case that kind of tipped us to maybe you can look at this is the maintenance of ball field, all our equipment is not geared around. Um, an installation of that size, it's all more geared around like climbing.
Yeah.
Or digging large. An installation of that size, it's all more geared around like plowing roads or digging large trenches for road construction. And you just can't get the large equipment in there to do the job.
We really only have one thing that's small enough to do any kind of maintenance and this is the return.
Yeah.
Right, so we everything's too big for. Park and garden size jobs we have.
Yeah, so the one of the estimates that you have right now is um. The from aggregate here, it's the loader, a bucket of three point bar, and that's thirteen six thirteen thousand six hundred.
So it should be, um, I believe it's higher than.
It will, it's if you add on the mower deck, if you got a, we got a mower deck for it.
Right.
Use it in mode.
And it it's all in here. Uh, it's all broke down in that estimate.
Sixteen thousand two hundred.
Should have the loader, um, I asked to uh, get a uh, forty eight or sixty inch, I don't know what one they include it on the the thing, it's gonna be more.
That was sixty.
And then also it comes with the three point, but um, we need a uh. What, draw drawbar for the three points so we can pull the ball field.
And that, were they gonna give a discount?
They were gonna give a discount, um, and all of them so far hated discount because it's third town municipality, but I believe they would fifteen.
Okay, so the other thing is a lot of places software is being passed financing, so it might need to be a situation where.
Yeah.
Interest free for five years.
Yeah.
So we gotta get details on it, but.
Yeah.
We have to that end. A ball field that we're. struggling to maintain probably based on the fact that we're we're trying to to take care of it, it's still a bit, it's drastically too far for what that's facing.
We should get a two bar for the buckets so we can back drag.
Yeah.
Um, I do know the masses have a float function. Where you can just literally tilt the bucket the way you want, put it in the float, and it just sits there and you just back drag it. Makes it really easy.
Correct.
And basically it's a wash with the equipment that we sold.
Yeah.
If we're gonna purchase something, if I could put my two cents in, I'd rather not find something because the stuff came and it's for me to keep up, keep track of.
That's fair.
I don't.
Yeah.
I honestly don't know how financing would work. I don't think you're gonna get the zero percent being that you're getting a better price or.
Right, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, it's we gotta we gotta hook around the.
Find out all the numbers, yeah.
If we have the money, we can start it, we'll have time to get it out.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, right, it's wash, basically, the equipment that we sold and what we're looking at purchasing.
Yeah.
Yeah, which probably this morning gets me concerned about the one unit of that aggregate here. Um, about not being an add add a backhoe on it. Or or something, but I won't, I I believe that we have a full size backhoe, so we really wouldn't need a small backhoe for like trench.
Yeah, and so we we got the big thing backhoe, we don't leave a little backhoe attachment on the subcomp.
Yeah. Yeah.
I have a backhoe attachment, so I don't have anything. Yeah, it's better than nothing.
Okay. No, I I think we're out of here. I I looked at the concrete too.
Cause we'll be.
Someone mentioned the name, but uh, he he looked at another truck's. Different car and said that don't have a quick. Quick.
Yeah, quick quick connection, absolutely.
We lost. It's the end of life.
The front, this, the skin loader, the skin loader front detach is something that we all need, we know we need um, for versatility in the machine. Unless you wanna start to rent this in the field, it's.
But uh, it's not happening. Does everyone know, you're you're talking like a forty eight, forty eight or?
Two to forty eight or sixty for the the ball.
And if they were to open it, you can put a seventy two in there.
You 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 might be able to, but I.
I think I think I I I think forty eight and sixty is is. What you wanna be after.
Zero turn is is six, they're fifty one.
It's different here ratio, that's a whole different, you know.
Yeah.
You think, you know, uh, the size I'm looking at getting is the size I park tonight in the parking lot roughly.
Yeah.
Cause I don't know. Yeah, it's not the rubber tractor or. So that way, if there's any questions about size, um, if you would like. Um, there's any questions about size, I can look at my tracker out in the. Now that tracker, my tracker looks bigger because it has the backhoe attachment on it, which it does not look that big with the backhoe attachment. But like I also told you, look, if you're gonna use the front loader, right, because on some my side. That loader can do nine hundred and fifty pounds, right, but you would need a counterweight to lift with your rear three point. I I use the backhoe as a counterweight for everything.
Yeah. I have I have a tiller that I use to counterweight.
There you go.
Okay, uh, we're on that next one, based on. Quotes, we're probably gonna be okay there, but uh, we will make sure that we're looking at the right things, warranty, technical specs.
I do know the massive warranty is six years on the tractor, it's one year on the woman's that are that are massive. If I didn't get the redefined grant yet on the other. Three estimates.
Okay.
We got them from um, Essex here country and eleven um. Headwinds and then aggregate.
Very good. Okay, next, uh, we have uh, I have on the agenda for twenty six for traffic issues. Uh, there are some people asking for dumpster exemptions. Um, you can file a request, you would need to supply a copy of a a valid business license. Or it has to be an apartment with a unit of five or more dwellings, farm, or an actual commercial business. Um, business that is inside a residence, uh, where the residence resides, uh, does not qualify, or if you work from home. Also not considered a a a commercial property. Um.
So so just to clarify, it's only a commercial property. The the only, if you're, so you can only do business at your home if. It is zone fit correctly, and so people that are working out of home. They they need they need to understand that does not qualify them for dumpster. And uh, just to clarify, it's for the burning trash.
That's straight up forbidden.
Yeah, we can, we cannot burn trash.
Fires.
Yeah.
Retires.
Yeah, don't hurt fires. Okay. Uh, next, uh, we had a. Point of conversation around pay, uh, there was a question on time versus mileage, et cetera, or upon the exemption that was attended. At the February workshop meeting, we discussed, uh, made a motion to allow the three road crew members that had attended flyer training. Uh, to include the time in transit as as paid time based on, uh, I'll say the historical precedence around that. Uh, we will be working to outline the policy going forward on that around time and mileage. Specifically, and it will be part of the before the campaign. That way it is is very clear cut and set in stone. Okay, next is the CWP, that will be through some Main Street. Uh, there was a request for the release of Aspro money, total of seventy one thousand one hundred and eighty seven dollars. There has uh, it's a inspected still, I believe.
Yeah, that that request came in yesterday.
Okay, well seriously, you mean after yesterday? He's getting it.
Yeah. I came in Tuesday morning, five thirty, and I was sitting on the. Chilling thing in the front of the long floor. We can't we can't figure out how to move the office.
Ah.
Yeah.
If it got stuck like on the shelf Monday, just gotta put the door.
No, it was like, you could see it, it was like laying there like, so we put it.
I'll I'll work on resolving this.
Yeah.
There you go.
Cameras.
And and I have been, that owner has been. Asking for a lot of U N, at least landscaping things, and I don't think we're taking into consideration, so I I've been working with him on that. And Wednesday, we had a meeting with craft codes there because he is looking to get a temporary occupancy permit. Uh, so that he can rent out. To be units in the buildings that have been finished. So there was a bunch of list there, he needs a security, uh, fencing up, still doesn't have electric service for the lights. Um, and he needs to have a handicap parking space behind the barn, and Pratt is ready to issue. Temporary. Just so you know.
Excellent.
Well, um, the owner is also debating the next series of buildings. He builds. The possibility of maybe changing configuration to have climate control. It just depends, he wants to see where the market goes with the unconditioned spaces now and then from there.
Correct.
It is looking very nice.
Just to give you, just to give you an update on.
Yeah, thank you, Chuck. Okay, next item is the PSAS disability plan. Um, all eligible employees must, the question that we had, and I think this is probably gonna be a column question, is. Um. Is this the secretaries specifically? Cause we don't really. Like we have the the disability sector to.
Yeah, the future of the ballot, we needed this and and. I'm trying to do it.
So. Disability plan is something that you can offer as an employee benefit. It's within the board's discretion to determine who is offered the benefit.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I say we have. Yeah, like I I'll be honest, I I read the initial bit of it and I was like, I honestly don't know who this would even apply to other than like the road crew, but. Well.
I don't, I don't think. Yeah, it's there there's no. Obligation to have to provide short or long term disability insurance.
There's a look at see what the PSAS plan is. If you have it, next time I'm in the office, just pull it up and I'll take a look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, the next is the veteran's real estate exemption. Uh, there's two residents that we can be needing to consider. First one is David Oberon. Um. Based on the fact that uh, unless I'm mistaken, he is genuinely a veteran basis.
Yes, yes.
Received.
And this is from prior years.
Yeah.
The proof is.
I'll make a motion to approve the veteran's real estate exemption for David Oberon.
Second. Royal Paul Peter.
Hi.
Irene.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
And uh, Irene, is Joseph Stolzboos a carrier?
I believe so.
Okay, so. Based on that, I'll make a motion to approve the veteran's real estate uh, exception exemption, excuse me, for Joseph Stolzboos.
Second. Royal Paul Peter.
Hi.
Irene.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Okay. And the last item on the agenda is the emergency management coordinator report. I do not believe that we have anything.
He didn't submit anything. No, this is FYI, he still has purpose, really anything. That he's been approved of, and so, um, he asked, we'll get, we'll try that we approve him. Uh, what did we approve that last year? So he's like, I mean, I can't, uh, you do it on on the credit card at the office, I said, that's not a problem.
Yeah. Yeah.
So it doesn't go on his personal credit card.
That's fine.
So we're gonna come in and do that. I think he he we purchased some of. Cratchit straps to keep that down, but other than that, he's just during training, he tends to the the PSAS uh. Uh, conference for the portion for the um, emergency managers and had a good time of it, so. He's running pretty closely with with the fire department now, so so things are going well, things are going really well.
Okay, good, um. Lisa just got up, but uh. I don't think I have the police report.
Try to put on stream and see.
Thank you. Oh. So other than that, we're we'll move into supervisors' comments. I Chuck.
Well, I could, if I could amend the agenda for the benefit of uh. Marlin Ray Martin's poultry operation, kind of a project, um. I believe this started five or six years ago, um. Over seventy six twenty seven Lancaster Avenue, really in Myers Town, the five oh one. Um, unbeknownst to them, they had a letter of credit, I'm not sure if it was actually a letter of credit for the site improvements. Or if a letter of credit is held to in substitution for a maintenance farm. So I'm not real sure of the amount. Regardless of that, um, they had received a notice from their bank, that's the eighteen month period was about to expire. Account of authorizes if the letter of credit is gonna be renewed. So she rushed in a request to lease the letter of credit. I was out on site yesterday. And I'm having a report that all the stormwater improvements, they were deemed completed in September of twenty twenty two. But this maintenance period of eighteen months was applied to this project. And then, um. Everything, all the stormwater improvements are in functioning, I have no deterioration, no problems, structural problems, so. My recommendation to the board. Take action to allow for the release of that remaining sort of credit. For that project.
Colin, is there, uh, do we have to do anything weird with the agenda?
Yes, well, if you amend the agenda, it's it's fine.
Okay, I'll make a motion to amend the agenda. Um, Lisa is away. Right now, sorry, Lisa. Um.
Her minute.
Yep, so uh, I'm gonna make a motion to amend the agenda.
Okay. Second.
For the Marlin.
First of all, I was I was gonna do it.
Paul Peter.
Hi.
Irene.
Bye.
Jesse.
I second that was Jesse or?
Irene.
Irene. Okay, second motion is to authorize the release of the letter of credit for the Marlin Ray Martin poultry operation.
Second, Irene. Royal Paul Peter.
Hi.
Irene, I'm Jesse, bye. Seen that complex thing. For a while, okay, yeah, you know.
Yes.
Yeah.
Your app.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, going into supervisor's comment, thank you, please bring this out, um. Other than a lot of traffic stops or eighteen traffic stops and twenty seven citations that you moved last month. Uh, the rest of it was fairly quiet with the the standard uh, amount of like EMS fire advisories, fallouts and other uh, incident response items, so. Uh, apparently lots of traffic stops, lots of tickets, but otherwise. Fairly standard. Um, as much earlier, uh, I do want to have Butch and the road crew pick up another probably two or more loads of cold patch, cold patch beyond what we've already approved. Um, for Colin's input, we'll we'll do that and gratify that next month's meeting. Uh, but based on some of the driving around that I've seen, where you're gonna need a cold patch. So. Uh, otherwise, um. The only reminder that I have, because I believe the timing of it is is. Long, uh, we have the M T C A car show on May the eleventh, um, that would be honest, that's nine until three. Okay. Uh, from nine AM until three, uh, should be an an awesome time, we can have a good turnout, and if anybody is interested in in volunteering to help direct traffic or anything like that. Let me know or let one of the M T C A members know, you know, which is a an extra set of hands. Um, Jesse, do you have any comments?
Um, the only thing I have for my comments is, um. Saturday morning, um, the HOA gentleman, I forget his name, um, come come to me and the board here about these. Fifty baby catfish that's that's stuck in the pumpkin guts.
Damn.
Damn, boy, um, I did look at that pond and it's, my concern also is the algae.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of algae in there.
Yeah, wait, wait, wait.
Okay.
A lot of algae in.
Catfish.
A catfish, a lot of cats, okay.
So, um, the pumpkin truck ended up having fifty catfish stuck in its screen, and that was hindering the flow of the truck. And he was, he came in here with a bit of concern about that because that's his spot, that's their spot.
That's on fire with him.
So he, um. Expressed that concern and I went out there and took pictures and I saw ponds of algae in pond.
The ponds should be being maintained by the HOA.
That's that's why you also came here.
It's it's not been leased to the HOA.
So I told the Fish and Boat Commission to touch base with them, and that there is permit permits and the whole nine yards that you can get to kill everything chemically. Uh, but it has to be done through them, and they're permitting through them.
For a blessing of some sort or.
That's FYI. Manmade pond.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did someone duck catch it?
No.
I said lots of, cause there was. Lot of them, so let me see if I have.
So initially, initially.
How else will it happen?
Well, there's the what the what the game commission and the the boat fishing boat commission said is, you know, ducks go from pond to pond, they get eggs on their bodies and.
Oh, yeah.
That way, some eggs supposedly can survive through the dead the trap. Um.
Nature.
And.
Like by someone.
Stuck upon, so.
That's a good relationship.
Yeah.
Yeah, so so, um, it, uh. Yeah, so.
Your question, Irene.
But maybe.
I mean, there might be if the pond is usable to fight fire. Yeah, that that's obvious, that's obvious. So 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 we need to help. Yeah, we're, so he was ac- asking us to try to push to get the HOA management, we could do with their maintenance, they just planned on doing that. Um, because he had the concern because the, yeah, the developer, HOA people are not doing. And he said, I believe he's, I think he told me it was eighteen months overdue or more now. I don't remember, Irene, to you. For for for. Why?
So the plants. Who who are currently on the mark.
The HOA has a response. The developer still owns the land. But the HOA, I believe that's the response, okay, cause they. Oh, okay. I tried to stop, like, okay.
Yeah, so they're saying.
That haven't been convinced yet, that lot. That lot and.
That lot hasn't been convinced.
That is correct, and the fielding of the pond have not been convinced yet.
Why haven't any been?
Yeah, it is.
Well, the the infill, the N D S program is still up.
Yeah, they were waiting to close up in the permit.
So.
Potty lot and the others, so.
They will be gone.
He gets the responsibility of you over.
Yeah.
To the position at least.
And that's what they were saying for us to withhold.
Yeah.
Until they do their. May, and and it should be with that, and honestly, something needs to be done because I see it as a major fire hazard.
Yeah.
They have one, they can't use.
They can't.
It's fire. In the H O A. That's all the H O A. Not, but not, but not the common, that's been dedicated to it.
Yeah, but that's, yeah.
Yeah, let's, yeah. Up up the suit. Let's say, let's.
Speak the matter of advice.
Yeah, yeah.
It's it's a good, it has, uh.
It is a concern though, because when they tried to to use it to do a test, it didn't work.
They didn't, they lost load, they said what, less than twenty minutes.
And what, this was the the routine test?
It's a, I believe our compromise and they went in there and.
Fire department.
They're calling the seas.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So they connected to the dry hydrant and and they had a twenty two minutes flow and then it was all stopped up and then fish and algae and everything.
Did it draw? What about those? Yes.
Okay. You want to ask the community, which has has the. Security for this aspect of municipal improvement.
I don't really.
I have a book, but I. There is still remaining financial security for stormwater.
Totally probably probably have some right under the. Municipal improvements agreement. And property and potentially be that work and build and develop. Okay, so the extent that this developer does not accept.
So do we want to send a letter? A letter saying that you need to do this, they ultimately have them on the stick or do we just do we need the the stick?
Let's let 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 me think about this. And any further dedication, the new names can be ratified and have been included in the board, you know.
Is that regular?
The board agrees with.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, we we need the legal advice on this, but we need to act on it as soon as we possibly can to get who is responsible for playing that point, because. I don't want to see a fire and. People lose their house over.
Yeah.
It's.
Fish.
Yeah, and algae.
I would I would say. That condition is known for the park. Might put in another line in the pond to be able to draw.
I would hope.
But that's the pond.
Right, that's your problem too, when I was there, there was that much algae and I wouldn't even want to throw another line and if there may be so long that plot.
Gotcha.
Was that bad?
Okay.
You're better off trying to use the outfit over here and then busting it in. And that's losing time, any time that.
Again, there's a breakdown, probably a maintenance response.
Yeah, that's what's.
If you guys can clarify that, I'd be great, because I don't want to see anything of that.
Any other comments, Jessica?
Nope, that's it.
Irene?
Uh, just uh, kind of something to keep on our radar, we should consider advocating for road group. Uh, come, uh, within the next couple of weeks, maybe months, because love these guys, the things on the of them.
On the.
Yeah, yeah, and so there is none, there is a, there's there's a lot of stuff to do, so I believe we already have an ad to go. Um, uh, we could post it on Indeed, we got one response really the last time that was significant, our little tech is driving through, but. I think we still need to keep that circulating out there.
Sure.
Um, another kind of thing, David mentioned it to me. Um, the guessing that we have here.
Hmm.
He recommended that we fill it up with maybe about fifty to seventy five gallons of gas. What's happening is our mower can't get filled with the expensive stuff over in the messers.
Yeah.
Um, he said, let's just look into getting, uh, that filled up, this way the guys can just, um, yeah, but they're using the high octane stuff, which my understanding is, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's not.
It's not just like, so we spent and just put gas stabilizer in it, we could get fifty to seventy five gallons, so. Um, that's something to consider, does that need to go for approval for next, uh?
Wait, next up. I would just give it down and do.
Yeah.
If we have most, most non, that's that's.
It's intact.
The maintenance.
The the people company. I want to deliver.
We.
All a lot of.
Well, we'll make some calls, so if you want to find out then, you know, if something's over anywhere from fifty to seventy five gallons for a gas tank.
Sure. There's.
Um, uh, to to go along with that, um, we need some kind of a camera system.
Correct.
So we need a camera system on the tank, we need a camera system on the building, we need some type of a screen. I don't care if it's a ring system, I don't care what it is, so we need something to observe that tank to make sure the gas isn't being stolen.
Yeah.
Okay, and this this way we have it. Um, and and just, uh, to reiterate some of the stuff I was discussing at the workshop meeting, we're trying to be very forward thinking with with a lot of things now, so. Um, we're gonna start involving you a little bit more with helping us to to. Uh, essentially dream, but also make tentative plans for improvements throughout the community, and so I'm just talking around a a concept we were talking about. Calling it like the Marion Township Community Building Initiative. Um, we had, uh, there's a speed table, so we had talked about during, uh, the workshop meeting.
Yeah.
So instead of, because our our efforts to slow people down in town is just failing, people are ignoring. Those those lovely signs that we.
Well, there were some people.
Some people, but.
The people, the people that were going to speed no matter what, it's still speeding.
Right.
Well, one. Uh, so.
All right. Well, we'll note those, the ballers that we have to be kept kept stolen, so again, this is this is a concept we're talking about once a sewer is not.
Yeah.
Again, tentative plans, again, something like that, if we have the plans in place, we could start. Uh, we could finalize the project, apply for grants, things like that. Another aspect of it. Where is is the building itself, the park, um, which you're already on 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 board with, who wanna, who wanna do as much of the property as we can. The other thing, the other concept we were talking about is sidewalks. And and if you could give us an idea over what, where we can place sidewalks in town, how we could essentially support town. But it it's it's also reaching out and and what other things can we do in Marion Township, what can we do to incentivize people to stay? To invest in our town, to to build back this community, because it it's it's a dormant community and. It it makes me sad because it is a lovely little town. I want to see people move to town, I want to see people move throughout the entire township itself and say, hey. This is a place to to, um, this is a place I want to raise my family, this is a place I want to share with my friends. And so we create this initiative and we come up with these plans, so I'm asking you to 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 dream big, help us with some ideas. Things that 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 we're thinking about, and so if we have a walkable village here, and people are gonna come and walk, we're gonna make the the building and the park a destination. And we're hoping us up here that if people start seeing the the village and and the community center as as a loving place to be. That maybe that's going to incentivize some people to take some of these little houses, maybe have like a little bookstore, have a little coffee shop. Because we have that zoning capability. I'm talking like a seven to ten year plan, even the 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 twenty twenty five year plan. So I want to start from being forward and 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 planning and helping us with budgeting to a certain extent, and. There's some other concepts I could I could talk to you afterwards about, but they were talking about it, and he says he mentioned it as far as, uh. Budgeting, but but that's that's part of what what I want to bring to the table and what I want to focus the. My, the rest of my my term, uh, with with the the board here, and I'm I'm gonna hopefully run for reelection and. And just keep on pursuing that avenue, I I wanna want to focus on building of Marion Township, that that's one of my goals.
It'd be really nice to have sidewalks at the front more, because I was in a wheelchair for six months and couldn't use them.
Right. Right, right.
Well, I couldn't get, I couldn't leave my house.
Okay.
Uh, only drive here as I always do, you know, Main Street is your focal point.
Right.
The pavement needs help.
Yeah.
Yep.
Prior to doing any pavement. If you're gonna use little fields, we have to address all the handicap.
Right, right.
Everything else, that new pavement.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, so I have worked on numerous projects in other communities, uh, basically like a street skate project.
Yeah.
Um, using community development block grant money.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and you know, the whole. Purpose of that program is is due to the creation of a such a place. It does, and I've seen it happen exactly what you talk about. That seed money, if you will, is pressing up downtown, all of a sudden. Propping, just taking a little more pride, things are, you know, approved and painted and what have you. And then businesses started noticing and it 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 can be a. Really interesting way to bring the. Vibrant back.
They, Lee, Lee would did it, they got Grant to fix up Main Street, it looks a lot nicer than it did.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Yeah, I I and you know, if he goes, you know, as far as we're limited as you want, but. You know, just beautification scripts and grass script and street trees and and street lights, park benches, not a lot.
Yeah.
Something creative, a place that's, you know, more attractive.
You have to create the anchor.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and and just want to continue to be be forward thinking, so, um, if you could help us see any perspective and and get some. Uh, designs and ideas, and so we could create these future plans. And continue to update the public and maybe even something have like a a small sec round of bulls and board. Community building initiative of the projects that are planned, projects that hopefully down the road will get, uh, grants and funding for. And and just as a focus, I, you know, have my children here and maybe grandchildren, and. You know, keeping things within the community is important to me, and I'm sure it's important to a lot of people.
Excellent.
So.
Open, open invitation, Kelly, I see your hand up, let me just say this real quick, if you have an idea. Don't hesitate to call the office or write it down and drop it off, there there are no bad ideas, obviously, some ideas we may not be able to find grant money for, but. If you have a thought, put it in, I'd rather have it there in a certain way.
Yes, you know, for the future, we have one of our categories is community building initiative, so, you know.
Uh, no.
Yes.
It's what the community certification is trying to do, we, I put banners up, we need all holes for Marion Township. Um. The moving, it's the car show that's home, that really might be Jim and Brian.
Yep.
Um, near the fitness.
Yep.
The social possibility.
Yes.
The community search may turn that on and try to shoot burn people back, um.
Yeah, you guys are kind of unofficially the, you know, parks of Red Bull for Marion Township and and what we're shooting for here, and the other side of that, we want to help. Do the infrastructure aspect of it, you guys are doing the event portion of it in space, but we want to try to to. Attack with the other direction, get money to do things like put up more banners, put in better sidewalks. Put in planters or trees or whatever, things that wouldn't necessarily, it shouldn't be within our budget, certainly wouldn't be within the MTC.
Right, right. And again, my my understanding of the big takeaway about conferences, if you have the plans in place, instead of looking for grants. As if you have those plans in place, you can take those places and now the grant's available, and so. We're prepared and 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 unfortunately, we we've been so far behind in 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 all these problems that have popped up since. Peter and I took took these seats up here, and now finally I think things are on track and things are getting resolved, so I think it's time we could move forward and and start. Planning, and then once the plans are in place, then boom, those grants pop up, we're able to easily, more easily apply them. Rather than chasing them down and we could move forward with community development, I guess sidewalks really would want to go in until, uh, and unless the sewer would go in. You know.
It's yes and no, I know, I think they're.
I feel, you know, that would be the way to go, we could do it in phases and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On one side, but then.
Yeah.
You want to make sure you do the other side.
Yeah, yeah.
There is really, there is, there's a lot of people that have confronted me throughout the years of living there, just me practically walking my sidewalk. Have come to me and said, I want to redo my sidewalk, but I don't want to do a secret choreo going.
Right.
Hmm.
And so.
You know what I mean, so I get I get what they're where they're coming from, we don't want to spend double.
Right, any type of street skate project, I'm good with.
No.
Including curb ends, sidewalk, pavement, crosswalks. I think Main Street lends itself to a boulevard street.
Yeah.
Right, the center aisle, trees.
Yeah.
Um, and then adding parking, picking up parking, because the parallel parking is very inefficient, the road is that wide.
It is nice having the wide open, especially. Car show.
That promotes speeding then.
Right, it does, it does, but.
Does. And those those speed tables, I think are are decisions are.
Yeah. Yeah, I was actually, I I like the book.
Yeah.
Of specifically that last one.
Yeah. Yeah.
It it's like a really long, low speed bump.
Yes, it is, and so it's easier for them.
Um.
But we we need to have something, if we were going to do something like that, you don't want something.
Oh, you can think, exactly, it's actually pretty, pretty much outright discussed speed bumps, so.
Right, 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 yeah. Yeah. Yes.
Something that can be gradually adjusted to with this with a plow, I expect that it's a lot.
It's not only the car speeding, it's the full size tractor was.
Yeah.
Full size tanker speeding through Main Street, I mean, it's not just cars.
That's.
No, it's it's being.
So so, you know, I I guess just to wind up, you know, we we want to focus on building this community of. And then and focusing some effort towards that and and budgeting accordingly and also seeking for the grants.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, that's the only way that we're gonna do it, but it's having that five to ten, maybe twenty year plan. That's in place and and because that's the way you build up a community, that's what you you can be finalized a community for. Those of us that are, it's for our development, it's for our children, our grandchildren, that's what I want to see.
Those those taper comes, I believe, plows are.
Yeah.
Or not, not the normal slice of a bump.
Yeah.
It's 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 not like they.
Yeah.
I'm I'm seeing the dream, you got that.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, you can help us out with that, I really appreciate it.
Okay.
So.
Irene, anything else?
No, thank you.
Excellent, Charlie.
Um, the only thing I did want to mention, and should have said so when we were talking about student brought village. They did now submit their NDS permit, it was termination, that's one of, what was that called? Um, so conservation district will. Out to. After a rate event to see if that infiltration area indeed infiltrates.
Okay.
I know that's one of the things.
Once they're quite secure.
Sorry. And they couldn't do it over the winter. What happened to them.
Okay, there's any updates on that, I'm sure you're you're usually.
I like, you know, what's comes in. You know, so they're working towards. Closing out that development.
Yeah, please just don't forget about the fish. And the algae.
I hear you, uh, Colin, anything?
Nothing, and there's no need for an exercise tonight.
That's, thank you. Uh, Lisa, any comments for you?
Uh, just to set it ready, um, on the website and. I wonder if we use any upper that is fine, we pair tracker.
No, we'll mostly use any company that they want to. But let them know that they need to register with this Eric, that or whatever, yes.
Yeah.
So if they're already registered, that's great, but if you have somebody that you do want to use, Kelly.
Uh, sorry.
Yeah. Uh, I think so?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Kelly.
You should mention about workforce with that in streets, excuse me.
Yes, thank you, yeah, so we, as always, we street sweep a couple of weeks in advance of the the. The. Park though. We will be putting up signs that we can advance that for both events.
Thanks, April.
April twenty fifth.
Yeah, so you can sign that out.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, my my dates are.
That's.
And stuff, but we'll we'll be getting those signs up shortly and like we did the past couple of years, we're gonna put up both signs at the same time, one over the car show and one over the street sweep.
Great. And then, um, the other thing that I had was, have we talked with the Tulkey Police about. Taking.
Yeah.
Involved or.
Yeah, so I I sent a bunch of lines out and I need to follow up with a number of people, um. Can't remember which municipality it was, but they had their meeting yesterday, I talked to the secretary before their meeting and she said it was an agenda item. Um, I've not heard back from Maryburg yet, which is abnormal, it's usually their their. Fond, so I'm gonna call their their office again. Um, and, uh, Puma Hawk and PD have the meeting to be a yes or no, but there's usually been for us. And then I actually don't have a seat weaver, the new, we we don't have contact information for this. Okay. No, no, just like have it there.
Yeah.
Like as representation, like have a stand or something.
Yeah, it's much the same, just kind of go around.
Or and then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, that's a lot of parts.
So it's, um, I have a whole bunch of lines out there and I know a number of municipalities are, they have it on their their April meetings.
And I, last year, I don't know, it worked out, but. There were safety here, uh, the law before twenty two at the end of the park though, which was.
Yeah. I I didn't actually, we didn't ask for them to show up, I think they just caught wind of it from Paul Mahakas and showed up. I'll 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 reach out to them, but that's actually, that's a good point, I forgot to do that, I'll see if we can get somebody, yes, we did.
Okay. If we can have supervisor present at the community association, maybe the suburbs, that would be beneficial.
Yes, and I'm honored to be there the past couple of times, but like my work schedule, I was out of state most of the the times I stayed meetings. Um, so if I'm physically here in PA, I'll be there, but.
First, first year.
Yeah.
And I I'm I'm sorry about that too, because I planned on coming when he couldn't come to, or even when he was there, but I've been doing physical therapy yet for my my injuries, so.
Yeah, so I I apologize for that specific one, I'll clear everything I can do there, but I think this past one, in in Washington DC. For that day, unless we're gonna start doing it on Zoom, I can dial in sometimes slowly, but. If I'm not physically here, I'm not physically here. Uh, yeah, you just.
Yeah, I. Oh, yeah, we're not leaving there, see, you got two big pine trees.
Yeah.
Anyway, there've been trees falling everywhere. It's. So if if one of those pine trees falls down, or take my house, or take next door, and probably Tim's list.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's.
Are these.
Their their private property.
Aren't they on the top, or they just, it's worth.
No, it's his next door neighbor in the front yard, right? It's your next door neighbor, but in the front yard, right, not in the back.
Yeah. Fact that. Must be a big.
Yeah, of course.
Walking with, have an order to say you can be stopped off. And say, so if I don't do no damage to them.
I mean, conceivably we could. Right, maybe it would purely be a a liability situation between homeowners.
Yeah, we know what they tell them.
Yeah.
Here, two years ago. A branch fell off and went down to what, Hurricane?
Hmm.
You know what, you know what the neighbor said, the insurance company said it was an active nature.
Right.
So that bullshit has got to stop.
Yeah, I mean, we'll we'll look into it, but, um. A lot of this comes down to.
You know, it's, even down reality, it's a big, big, uh. Maple tree.
Hmm.
If that one of those branches break and a guy, I'm sure that, okay.
I mean, I understand what you're saying, because that tree is probably two or three hundred years old in my backyard, excuse me, um, mine's healthy, thank God, um, but. It's still a tree, so I don't know.
You can see.
Proper, right, it's right in the middle of it, you know, so it's.
But it's. If if you're being one, that you keep an accident tree, so if it does something, it fall over, nobody gets hurt.
Yeah, so we'll we'll. We'll look into it.
Yeah, we know. Actually, when I bought my house, I asked my insurance company about that tree and maybe it said, uh. It's a tree.
Yes.
But it's a natural, it's starting after the age when it's also.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, so on on that one, I'll I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting, the time is nine eighteen PM.
Awesome.
I'm sorry, who's second?
I did.
Hi.
Hi.